All right, we're going to call this committee of the whole meeting to order. Madam President, please call the board.
Trustee Burns?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Coleman? Not heard from him. Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Satch? Not heard from her. Trustee Liggins? Provide a notification that she cannot be elected.
Okay. First item of the discussion. The introduction of the commissioners of the zoning board of appeals, those that are here. Mr. Johnson, if you'd like to.
Sure, it appears that the only zoning board of appeal's member is David Fields. Come right up, David. Have a seat right there.
Move that mic back, because it's on. Just hold it until it gets green for me. There you go. All right. I'm not sure what and why, but you are on the zoning board. You've been on the zoning board for how many years now?
Two, three years.
Three years? Okay. So you're just, all you're doing is getting recommissioned, so. This was a particular presentation of our agenda that was brought by trustee Burns. Do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You've been on the zoning board for three years?
Yes.
Okay, so when you joined the zoning board, you have a time of your beginning and a time of your end, and then a time to be recommissioned, is that correct?
Well, apparently, what has happened is that I had to be reinstated again.
So that means that your first instatement expired and it's time for your recommission. And can you tell me when your first commission expired?
When my first went?
Yes. If you have to be reinstated or recommissioned, then you had a...
No, I don't have to be recommissioned.
Okay, the mayor just said you had to be recommissioned.
Well, yes, you're going to be re sworn in, yes.
You have to be recommissioned, re sworn in. So I'm asking you, what was the ending period of your first commission?
What's the when?
What was your ending period?
When was your appointment expired?
From what to what?
When does my appointment expire?
Yes.
It expired last month.
Okay, it expired last month, which is August?
Yes.
Okay, which means at this time and at this moment, you're not on the zoning board? Because you have not been recommissioned as a...
Yes.
Yet. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay. And you are the only person on the zoning board? And I know that we need at least four.
No, you're not. He's the only one that's on.
Oh, minimum.
He's the only one that's sure that there are four people on the board.
Okay, and can you...
Trustee Burns, can I save you some time, please? If I can? I like you, trustee Burns. You're real colorful, and you're animated.
I like you too.
But let me give you a little bit of information, since I know you don't know. The zoning board is voluntary.
I do know that.
Okay. And also, it's an appointment.
I know that.
So with other qualifications there is, you don't get to question those qualifications. It's not up to the trustees to pick the zoning board. It's not up to you all. This is something that's appointed by the mayor. So to tell you the truth, to be honest about it, you have no right to question me about my qualification unless I can question you about your qualifications by holding that seat that you're in.
Okay, sir, may I respond? I didn't ask you anything about qualifications.
But you wanted to bring it up.
No, I didn't say anything about your qualifications. That never came out my mouth. I asked you, when did your appointment expire? That is all I'm asking. Nothing more and nothing less. And then I asked you, you told me you expired in August, which means as of right now, you are not on the commission, the zoning board, as of now. Because you have to be recommissioned, which you have not been, and you have, it's expired. So I don't know why people think that their contracts can expire and they can just keep continuing in positions and they have no contract or no position to continue in. And then let me also address this. It is through the trustees that you are elected to be a commissioner. Not through the mayor. The mayor can appoint you, but we have to vote you in, sir. We have to, I am speaking, or point of order, I am speaking. And again, when you guys have the microphone in your hands, I do not open my mouth. Now, I'm going to do to you, like the Bible says, do unto others as you would have others to do unto you. So if you guys keep interrupting me, you're giving me permission to do the same to you. So respectfully, I have this mic. And respectfully, when your turn comes, it will be your turn. So me and Mr. Fields, we are having a conversation. And that's between me and him. Thank you. So again, sir, we have to vote you in. And if trustees say no unanimously, then guess what? You don't get to be on the commission board. So it's disrespectful for you to come and tell me what my job is. I know exactly what I was elected to do and what my position is. And one of those things is to be able to vote you on the board. And as of right now, you are not on the zoning board as of right now. So as of right now, I have no, there's no representation of anyone that is on the zoning board as of right now. So I'm asking, who are the people on the zoning board? Because right now, you are not one of them. So can you please tell me who the zoning board is? And the bottom line is, because the zoning board could be anybody. If I'm a trustee and if I have to vote people in to position, then I should at least know who these people are. And if we have the school board or anyone else coming to us, asking us to vote for something that has to be zoned, then again, we should know who the zoning board, what that consists of. And as of right now, it does not consist of you. Respectfully.
You finished?
So can you answer my question? Who are the members of the zoning board? If you've been on there for two years or three years, you should know all your members. So all I need from you is the members of the zoning board, that's it.
Okay. Trustee Burns? You sit there, you tell me that the trustees have to vote for my commission, right? So trustees have to vote for my commission?
Am I correct or no?
Then you should know who else is on that board, meaning that you all, as trustee, voted for him to come onto the board.
Well, first of all, sir, I've never met the zoning board. I wasn't a trustee at that time. So since I am a trustee now, and there is a, the school board needs a building zone, and now it is an opportune time for me to meet the members of the zoning board, and I am asking to meet those members. Is that a problem?
No, no, that's not a problem at all. The zoning board members are Emmett Farmer.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Darryl Colley, am I saying his name correctly? Darryl Colley.
Darryl Colley, okay.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams?
Mr. Anthony Williams.
Is he present here tonight?
Mr. Williams.
Who you mean, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson, no.
Well, Mr. Johnson cannot be a part of the zoning board.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In, 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 Point Dexter. In Point Dexter. That's the zoning board.
Okay, and Mr. Point Dexter, from my understanding, is supposedly the president of the zoning board? Or the chairman of the zoning board, is that correct? You guessed?
Yes.
So you've been on the zoning for three years, and you're not sure who the chairman is?
I've been on the zoning board for three years. Well, the thing you should be asking, how often do the zoning board meet? That's what you should be asking. How often do the zoning board meet?
I'm not, it doesn't matter. Okay, sir, sir, it doesn't matter to me how often you all meet, that is not my business. I'm not here to, I am not here to regulate your meetings. I am here to find out who is on the zoning board. Okay, so you have Emmett Farmer, Mr. Farmer, Mr., did you say Danny Coney?
Darryl.
Darryl Coney, and Mr. Kenneth Johnson?
No.
Point Dexter.
He's the administrator over the zoning commission. He is the administrator.
So if he's the administrator over the zoning commission, then he too has to be brought to the board. He has to be appointed. We, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. You, this is the first time that we are hearing, ever... The audience? This is the first time I am hearing that Mr. Johnson is who now, what is he? Sir, ma'am, please, Ms. Clark, I'm asking you, I'm asking one, Ms. Clark. Clark, Clark. I'm asking you a question. Mr. Mayor, I am not controlling the meeting. She's...
Ask the question.
I'm asking a question. Uh, Mr. Mayor, okay, okay, okay.
What's that mean?
We're going to do it to you. We're going to do it to you.
What's that mean?
We're going, I'm going to do it to you.
Do what?
So again, Mr. Kenneth Johnson is who now? Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, they said that you were something in the zoning. Who was your...
I'm not going to address you, because this is not in good faith. You know who I am.
I know, I know you're the village administrator, but I know nothing, I know nothing of your position dealing with the zoning board. So may I ask, what is your position on the zoning board, sir?
I'm not going to address your question.
Okay, no problem, that's fine, Mr. Johnson, you don't have to...
I know it's fine, because that's what I determined.
You don't have to address me then. But, so thus far, Mr. Fields, since you've been on the zoning board for the past three years, can you explain to me who Mr., because you were speaking of Mr. Johnson. Who is Mr. Johnson on the zoning board, sir?
I can't speak for Mr. Johnson, I can only speak for David.
I'm asking you, because these are the names that you gave me.
Right.
So these are the names that you gave me. I'm asking you, who is Mr. Kenneth Johnson on the zoning board?
And each one of those names that I gave you, if you have a question pertaining to those names, you ask that person, you ask David about David. And then I'm not going to answer for anybody.
Sir, I'm just saying, these are the names you gave me. I'm only asking you about the information you gave. And since you're the one that gave the information, you're the only one I can question, sir.
And that's the reason why I'm correct in this situation now. You want to know about David, you ask about David. I can't tell you anything about anybody else.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. So, Mr. Fields, do you, do you know what, the different zonings? That, you know the different type of zonings that we have in South Village?
Do you know the different type of zonings?
Mr. Fields.
If you're going to ask me a question, you should know the answer already.
Mr. Fields. Okay, actually, you can be dismissed, because you're not even on the zoning board, sir. So actually, I am wasting my time speaking with you at this moment. Because you're not even on the zoning board. So I, so actually, you can be excused. I need to speak, and I, our request as trustees was to meet the members that are on the zoning board. You are no longer a member on the zoning board. So actually, you're not even a representative of the zoning board.
So I'm concerned.
So, because you know what? The truth of it is, I was trying to be respectful, but since you want to go there, you can dismiss yourself, because you're not a participant of the zoning board at this time.
Why don't you dismiss me? Since I'm not a member, why don't you dismiss me?
My point of it is, at this point, I have no more questions for you.
Thank you.
Because you're not a member of the zoning board at this time. So it's on record that today, we have no members of the zoning board here in Comington.
Stay there, please.
No members of, there are no members of, there are no members of the zoning board that is present in this meeting right now. So there are no members of the zoning board, and that the record show that. So as of right now, we still do not know fully who all the members of the zoning board is. So I got names called, Mr. Darryl Coney, Mr. Emmett Farmer, Mr. Point Dexter, and Mr. Kenneth Johnson is something. But again, if he's a, if he's a, if Mr. Johnson is a part of the zoning board, then he should be able to speak on behalf of the zoning board. But he himself refuses to do so as well. So as far as I can see, they're no members that makes up the zoning board. And again, if you guys are asking us as trustees, or asking me as a trustee, to vote on buildings and businesses that need to be zoned, we as trustees, in the words of Mr. Fields, we should know who those zoning personnels are.
Okay. First of all, the zoning commission is appointed by the mayor, always have been. Until you rewrite the resolution or ordinance, it will stay that way. It's not appointed with the consent of the board. Zoning board is not, it's like your committee that you have, that you put people on or off or whatever, is not appointed with the consent of the board, number one. Number two, the zoning board recommends their findings that are brought to them at the zoning board hearing, which is open to the public. And the people that come before the zoning board present, if they want a special use or they want to change the heading of the zone that they're in, they petition that at the zoning, the board hearing, not the village board. When they do that, and after they've done their due diligence, they come back to the board, to the village board, and give their recommendation. Now, it was stated that you weren't, didn't know, but I'm trying to remember when the particular parcel that was on thirty was brought to the zoning commission. And then also, the church wanted to, then they did, give their firm, and that was brought to the zoning board. Maybe you weren't on there, on the board at that time as a trustee. But you just wasted twenty-two minutes of everyone's time here and didn't have all your facts in order to ask, what does the zoning board do and what is their purpose? You should know that already, as being a trustee, that's your, that's your homework to take care of and do. But as of right now, the zoning board will convene again and be able to go over the, there's a few items that are there that were brought to the regular board that were passed on, and that's what our village administrator is, and that's what he does. He, after he's been told by the board to pass it on, he calls and sets up with the different people that make up the zoning board, their meeting. He doesn't run the meeting, he's not part of, he doesn't have anything to say other than to get the zoning board commissioners together, so they can have the zoning board meeting.
Excuse me.
So if, if that's, that's all that is. Then as far as credentials, the only credential they have to do is have lived in the village. They have to be a resident in the village. So I've been to go back and forth and browbeat a person and ask him how long has he been and what... That's, you can do that, I don't know what you needed audience to do that for. It seemed like, that's why I said, go ahead, Sam. Because you didn't have to convene a meeting, to have everybody come in to listen to a question that you didn't even understand, to ask this person that's on the zoning board of appeals anything about who is on that board, who makes up that board, and those type of things. That could have been asked at any given time.
Okay, thank you.
So we're saying that. We're saying that, we're going to move forward.
No, sir, I have a, I, this is a discussion.
Trustee, you're a trustee.
We're in a discussion, and I have something to say.
Trustee, you said for the last twenty minutes.
I, and so, and you've been doing, you just did yours twenty minutes. So, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, I understand.
Mr. Mayor, no.
I understand that you said already made a statement.
Mr. Mayor.
You already made a statement.
I can speak, at least, I can speak three times, and I had only one.
I'm not...
Okay, well, if I got two, then I still have another time to speak. Listen.
So you've already stated, you've already stated that you're leaving.
Sir.
That you're going to be out of here probably before...
You are the worst mayor in the history of the village of South Village. You're disrespectful.
You are the worst trustee in South Village.
I have, I am going to speak. And number one, I know exactly what a zoning board is. I've worked with several zoning boards.
This meeting was not for zoning, to ask him, I didn't ask for credentials.
The next item...
I didn't ask for credentials. I didn't ask any of that. I asked who the zoning board members are.
The next item...
I didn't wish to go into discussion. These are all my items, so guess what? They're all my discussions, sir.
Can you hear that?
I'm not, I'm not...
What's that mean?
What, I'm not doing this. I'm not doing this, that's you doing. These items are every one of my items. So you have a speech to me about everyone, or you're going to adjourn the meeting? Because these are my items, and I'm going to speak on what I am on this agenda. Thank you. So again, I didn't ask for credentials. I didn't ask for any of that. I asked to meet the members of the zoning board. That is all I asked. So you, Mr. Grant standing there, putting words in my mouth and in their ears. Well, I'm going to tell them that. Because again, I haven't asked this gentleman for one credential, and I know exactly what a zoning board is and what their position is. So therefore, you get your facts together and get yourself together and get your understanding together. Because if I as a trustee need to see and know who the zoning board member, or the zoning committee is, then we have every right to do and to know so. So for you to try to stop it or block it, you're wrong. And you are absolutely right, that's the reason why he's not recommissioned now. Because he has not been voted in to be recommissioned. And until we vote him in, he is not going to be on the zoning board. So you get your facts straight, because obviously, you don't know. And guess what? Be careful, sir. Be very careful. She's threatening you. Be very careful.
Are you threatening me?
Things can be changed. I'm saying what you said.
No, no, are you threatening me? You said be careful.
I'm saying, be careful.
Good, thank you.
Be careful, because what you said is that it stays like this until it's changed. So be careful of your words, because this can be changed.
Okay.
It can be changed according to your words.
It's like you pay bills.
So again, again, just like you trying to pay eighty-two thousand to some woman, you got some kind of thing going on with.
Hmm, okay.
Eighty-five thousand out to a woman, Ms. Douglas, you got a thing going on, you might as well admit it back. Because this woman doesn't work here. So we can't go to the next, which are now. So if you want to be smart mouthed, then we can both be smart mouthed together. So again, quit trying to tell, now, listen, now, let me explain something to you.
You don't explain nothing to me.
I am not a part of your administration.
I know, oh, you're not.
Mr. Johnson, Ms. Lewis. Oh, no, I'm not. I am an elected official.
And what is that?
Just because you, I am not a part of your administration. Work from eight to five, they're in the back.
No, it's not.
Mr. Johnson, Ms. Lewis, Mr. Dante Jones. Those people are your administration. I'm not a part of that. I am an elected official. I'm a trustee, and I oversee you. And you have to give an account with these trustees. So understand who we are, and understand who you are, sir. Understand our position, so you stay in your chair. You stay in your chair, and let me speak from my chair. So just like you want respect for your chair, you're going to respect this chair you got. So again, I am not a part of your administration. I am a trustee. I am the corporate authority. That's who I am. So none of your people have badges I do. A badge of the board. And I'm a member of the board, they work. So I am not a part of your administration. Understand who I am.
Nobody ran this.
Understand who I am. Who I am, understand. And if you don't know, then go to the state statistics and read about it. Now, next.
Where is it? What do you mean, next?
All you are, sir, in your chair, and read.
Thank you, sir.
Read.
I appreciate the thing.
Read, sir. Read, sir. Read. Thank you for that. Enough disrespecting this chair. You've got enough of disrespecting this chair. You better recognize tonight.
Okay. The next item is, I don't know what this is, the discussion of accounts payable. So I guess I'll refer back to the same person that, who want to run the meeting.
I appreciate, and I'm not a person. You're not a person. You're not a person. Would you turn these lights off? Stop turning these lights off. What is wrong with you, sir? My God, my goodness.
Why you asking?
He is Grant standing.
You ain't going to ask him?
He just announced, he is Grant standing, look at him, my goodness. So again, we're going to discuss accounts payable. This is an eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars account bill. Eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I know that's right. And the mayor, and the mayor asked you a question, Mayor Burns. Do you expect for the trustees to pay eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars? And we don't know what to do, and I may cancel. Mayor Burns, I have a question.
I'm not asking you a question.
Okay. So let the record show.
Let the record be shown.
Trustee Burns is asking Mayor Burns, do he expect for the bill, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
That's what the bill is.
We have enough, we have school board members.
That's what the bill is.
And I want to announce the school board members.
So what does it have to do with...
I want to announce a school board member, Serena, and school board member.
So you're going to run everything? That's why, now you see why, now you see why you're my fellow.
I want to announce to these board members again, because they have accounts payables that they have to prove as well.
What's it got to do with...
I have accounts payables that they have to prove.
What's it got to do with this?
And I would be very curious to know, would any board member or trustee of the board pay an accounts payable, almost a million dollars, and they have not seen one bad account? Now, they don't know what, one dime does anything. And it is, and it is the responsibility of the mayor and his administration, his finance department, to make sure that the trustees have accounting of the monies that's in these payables. How are you to go out of your own expecting us to pay almost a million dollars, but you refuse to give us toes that's in the bank? You refuse to allow us to look at invoices. You refuse to give the trustees appointments to go into the office to look at invoices. We can't get appointments from the VA. We can't, Mr. Johnson, we can't get appointments from the director of finance, Ms. Lewis. And we can't get an appointment from you, because you as the mayor promised the trustees that you will make sure we got appointments with the VA. And that was all five months ago.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did, it's all right. Do I need to pull them in?
You can, yeah, pull them in.
Because you said right into me, and you will make sure.
Go get them in.
I will make sure we have them at the board meeting.
Oh, at the board meeting.
Because that was your words, that you would get an appointment with the trustees and the village administrator. And it's been five months, and you still have not done it. I just went with the village administrator just two weeks ago, stepped in his office and asked him if he would give him an appointment. And he told me he would give back to me, that was two weeks ago.
Mayor?
I don't see you talking, sir.
You've got to understand something. Before you, before you get, before you say, I'm just sorry. You've got to understand, when she's talking, everybody stops.
Oh, I understand.
She runs the meeting, she runs whatever, because she has the mic in her hand.
Whenever you finish talking, I have something to say about what you said.
No, no, she wants to run.
Because it's not true.
Well, everything she said is not true, so, I mean, there's no answer. There is no answer. No matter what you say.
We don't need to refer to any minutes.
Mayor Burns, could you please turn this mic on, sir? No.
When you start respecting it, I will.
Okay, well, I'll just use my, my, God-given microphone.
There you go.
Okay, again, we have Ms. Sonia Douglas, who was a former HR consultant, who contract expired in the village of South Village. The trustees did not renew her contract. Now, she sits on the board of two... Now, she sits on the board of two ex-employees again, who the board has not renewed their contracts. Now, what we have is a rogue administration who's allowing people to come heading out of our office without being under contract, without working in this village. And they're still putting their own discounts there. And they refuse the taxpayers to pay them eighty-five thousand dollars for working people who do not work or who was not contracted in this village. Here, a vendor who has no jurisdiction in this village. And you want us as trustees to pay her eighty-five thousand dollars of your tax pay dollars?
You have a point, you have, you have a point of order.
Again, we know the trustees have questions about, you don't want to ask.
I'd say you have a point of order.
I'm just a wonderful.
Yeah, 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 trustee is called.
They have accounts payables on the, in this place.
The trustee is called.
The, the council.
No, I understand.
This is one of the issues. This is one of the vendors on the.
You're wasting everybody's time.
They really don't want you all to know the truth. That's why he will not shut up.
Oh, shut up.
That's why he will not shut up. He don't want you all to know the truth. He don't want you all to know the truth. He's asking you and trying to force you, the taxpayers, to pay eighty-five thousand dollars to a non-contracted employee in this village. And he wants us to approve it. He doesn't want to show us the bank account. He doesn't want to show us the invoices. He doesn't want to have any accountability, but he want us as trustees to approve eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So, my job is to oversee the finances and to make sure the finances are, are handled correctly. That is my job, and that's what I was elected to do. Until we see bank accounts and prove that we, and how these bills are being paid. Because we have eight reports, people are not getting paid. We're giving, we're, we're signing off for people to get paid, and we're signing off, they're not getting paid. So until the mayor and his administration is ready to come, become transparent and give the trustees the bank account and the invoices, how can we pay people who we don't even know were hurt there to the bank? How can we pay people who we don't even have invoices for this work? How can we pay people and we don't even know what, how, where the money's coming from? So you want us to pay a million dollars and we don't know where the money is? Now, Ms. Lewis said that we have six million dollars surplus. I'm asking her to show us the bank statement, approve that.
It's not a surplus.
She said we have six million dollars.
It's not a surplus.
Well, again, well, what? See, that's the point.
That's what.
Why don't the trustees know what's in the bank statement?
Why is she saying?
So, once again, trustee Burns, when you came to review the bank statement, you didn't know how to read the bank statement, so we're just gonna be honest. You wanted to know why do we have negatives? A negative mean that we paid something. You're not gonna holler at me. You're not gonna holler at me. Well, I'm not gonna say this, please.
She's like.
I'll show you one where you can read it.
You don't understand. Cash on hand versus a surplus. It's not our job to explain that to you. We could be here all night. Be professional, be courteous.
I want to see the bank.
You wouldn't understand it.
And I have to elevate my words, because they keep turning my mic off. So again, the trustees, as they should, is supposed to have the bank account. As they should. Why won't the mayor give us that? Period, period. So again, you want your accounts payable paid? Show us what.
You don't want to pay?
Show us the money.
You don't want to pay?
Uh, listen, uh, delay is not a denial.
Okay.
But you are going to delay payment until you show us the money.
Oh, I'm gonna delay payment.
Next, please.
What you mean, next, please?
Next, please. If you want this bank, this, uh, accounts.
Next item.
Show us the trustee.
Next item, the next item is the, uh, uh, veto, uh, veto power of the mayor.
Okay, again.
Where did you get this from?
I'm about to read it to you.
Oh. Oh, no, she, she, I think the village, um, um, director has already shown everyone and at the last, uh, meeting about the, uh, how much money was in the account. So then she, she sent it out to.
So the bottom line, the bottom line is sixty-five Illinois five dash six dash four dash one. The mayor shall be recognized as the official head of a city or village by the court for the purposes of serving civil process and by the government for all legal purposes.
No, that's, that's right.
The mayor of any city or village which adopts the mayor of any city or village which adopts this article shall have veto power as provided by section six dash four dash two through section, uh, six dash four dash four.
Go to it.
This village has not adopted Article Six.
Wait, 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 wait.
This village has not, this village has not adopted Article Six. There is no ordinance that we have ever done to adopt Article Six. Therefore, the Illinois State Statute says, until the village adopt Article Six, to give the mayor veto power by ordinance of the trustees with the consent by ordinance of our trustees with the consent and approval of the court. This mayor does not have veto power. The state statute. Now, you can laugh if you want, but here's the state statute right here. Here's the state statute right here.
Is that all you have, trustee? Is that all you have, trustee?
Here's the state statute.
You have said it four times.
No, it's veto.
Trustee, is that, is that all that you have?
This is, and I adopted Article Six.
You, you can, you can, you can. Our lawyer is here, and that's why he's here. Could you please, uh, Mrs. clerk, would you please address this case?
The lawyer can address whatever he wants. Whatever. The Illinois State Statute says we have to adopt the statute, and if we don't adopt it, it does not exist.
Okay, alright, good.
And I have five checks.
Trustee, would you please? Would you please, you, you finish. Trustee, I, you're done. Trustee, you're done.
And they all.
Trustee, you're done.
So.
No, you're done. Mr. clerk, would you please? No, no, you can, no, you're done now. Why don't go back before me?
I'm not going back.
Then be quiet. Then be quiet. And learn, and learn to respect the chair.
You cannot tell me how to address my items.
For, for, I'm talking. Please be quiet. Please be quiet. Thank you. Please be quiet.
I'm not gonna be quiet.
Oh, you're not?
No, I'm not. These are my items, it's us. So how?
Now you see why, now you see why.
I want me to be quiet.
Now you see why.
I'm agenda with all of my items.
You don't, you don't see all of your items. Nobody can say.
This is the title of the agenda.
Would you let, would you let his lawyer talk?
I have my ear up to the door.
Oh, you should, what he said?
I have my ear up, I have my ear. He had to say last week, and I don't believe him again. So unless you can show me a voice that the village is like, I'm just, I'm just, the lawyer has nothing to say.
You don't have that response up there, nor do you have an authority. You don't have that authority to tell him what he can and cannot say. Would you please? Now you see why your mic's not on. You didn't see what your mic's not on. See, one thing about it, you, you, you can try to give, but you don't want, you don't listen. Would you let him speak? Would you let him speak?
No.
Told you, it's a joke, it's a joke.
Show me a voice.
Mrs. clerk, would you please go ahead? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So pursuant, as I said last week, and just reiterate, um, the, the village has certainly adopted Article Five um, of the Illinois Municipal Code, um, which, from which the mayor derives his veto authority.
I need a copy of that, sir. Give me a copy of the board's. No. This is not, this is an APG, I'm saying.
Say whatever I want to say.
Oh, well. So, I tell you, this is you did this week.
Okay, he just got to tell you what, what, what door the board. At this time, at this time, um, you see.
So you would probably have to go back to the bylaws from when the village was founded.
So, that's, that's your job.
No, it's mine.
Since you're, since you got it, though, then it's all getting tougher.
I have not brought it up. This was brought up by you. You're, you're arguing that you have this notion, you know, which is, you're the one making the assertion, you prove it.
Okay, we're done, we're done with that. We're going to move on. Trustee. Trustee, trustee. Trustee, thank you. We're gonna move on to public comment.
You put this biases, attorney, stop, stop. You stop.
Are you okay?
No, you, no, you tell me.
No, so are you okay? Then why don't you stop, I'm trying to run the meeting. Would you be quiet, please? Thank you. Now it's time for public comment. All questions and comments are directed by, directed to the mayor. Each speaker makes comment on any matter concerning the business of the village. Each speaker is allowed one up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter, replies, or rebuttal. I will respond to all questions once all public comments are concluded. Please, when you come up, state your name.
Tammy Jones, I don't usually do this, but I am going to put this out there. I am board president for District 168. Very proud board president. I'm sitting here tonight, and I'm not sure what's going on behind the scenes, but I have a personal plea for the students of South Village. Get y'all stuff together. The zoning issue, whatever it is, please, I beg of you to get this together. This purchase would be amazing for our special ed department, and it would be very disheartening to have this fail because the village can't get their stuff together. This is disheartening and embarrassing and, and beyond ridiculous. So I beg of you guys to please pull this together and get this zoning passed. Not just for what it will do for the students, but if our students are soaring, our city, our village will soar. People will come to us for what's happening. And we have great things happening in District 168. Again, I don't throw my name around much, but tonight, Board President Jones is asking you guys to please pull it together.
Would you be quiet? Would you please be quiet? Anyone else?
David Fields. You know, Mr. Mayor, we sit here, week after week, sometime two, three times a week, and we keep hearing the same things over and over again, all of these accusations. Yet there's not one shred of evidence that has come forth, anything tangible to come forth. It goes from one person to the next person to the next person, and they still don't know what's going on. But it's one thing that I know for sure. It's a shame that a person would allow themselves to be used in a manner that would affect their dignity. Yo, uh, there's always somebody pulling a string somewhere, and that string is being pulled. Yo, uh, it's a shame that you have a puppet and a puppet master in this day and age. There's a lot of things that's been said and questioned in these meetings, and the directions come from one person. When are our people gonna learn to stop being led by their nodes or a promise? Cause a promise is something that would be broken and never fulfilled. And I've sit here, and I've seen it over and over again. There's a thing that's called game people's play. And I can tell you one thing, it's definitely a game being played. And until certain people wake up and realize that they're the ones that's being played, I bet you in the end, they'll wake up. Because when it all comes down and it lands on their shoulders, they're gonna say, well, this person told me that person here is gonna be clean as a whistle. Gonna be clean. Throwing rocks and hiding their hands. That's what this situation is. And it's a shame that a person would allow himself to be put in that type of situation. And I think if you don't recognize what's being done to you, you ain't gonna never recognize it. You ain't gonna never recognize it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, uh, my name is Ernestine Blackman. And I have to agree with what the young lady says. We come here every Tuesday, and we have not accomplished anything for this village. All we do is come here and it's a bunch of argument. Nothing is being moving forward. And as I see leaders, you guys are, I've never seen leaders like you guys before in such mess as never before. You guys need to really get it together. You're not gonna be up here on this seat no longer.
Mr. Robinson, um, I had two questions, but one of them is already answered.
She asked, who was your first name?
I'm sorry?
First name?
Reggie.
Reggie?
Mm-hmm.
Reggie, Reggie?
Robinson. Robins, uh, yeah. Um, uh, one question has already been answered. This is my first time here, and I can pretty much see why. But I would really like to know why we don't have lights on two hundred twenty-four from Brookwood all the way around to Burn. And that, those lights have been out, that storm was a month ago. I would like to know, well, I said that question was answered. So could y'all please get it together and give us some lights? The street lights have been out for a month, come on. We've been calling. We've, we've been, we've been calling. Oh, yeah, we're working on the road. It don't take a month to get these lights back on, I know that. I know that for a fact. So please get the lights on. Quite a, quite a hard one to get our lights on.
One question. Frank Oliver. Question I have, uh, the clerk mentioned a date that the people would be out for the assessment, explaining assessment taxes. And I, I didn't have no pen to write it down. I think it said the twenty-fifth. Okay, uh, one thing I would like to say to the young lady over there. Why do you think, why is the rest of your board members not here? And they sitting there to come with that?
Francine Anderson. Okay, um, no, it wasn't you, it was my thoughts for a minute. Because I wanted to figure out how I wanted to address the board today. And, and part of that is because.
Let's start over, please.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm Francine Anderson. Today, we have three items on the agenda. Trustee Burns, when you take twenty minutes to talk about every subject, and it's three of them, then that's a whole hour of our time. I think it would behoove you and all the other trustees to be more considerate about the audience that's sitting here at these public meetings. Today, I found it very discouraging, disheartening, when you sit here and badgered Mr. Fields, who is a member of the zoning board. He is up for recommission. So his commission has expired. And whether you and your rogue trustees, whether you're gonna put him back on the board or not, has nothing to do with the proposed zoning that is necessary for what we need to do for District 168 and the children and the families of this village. The other concern I have, Mister Mayor, and that's just statements, because I don't need an answer. Because I already know the answer. I already know that the mayor has veto power because it's in the municipal code from the state of Illinois. And the state of Illinois supersedes any of that other stuff she's talking about that I don't know where she's getting it from. But South Village is not home rule. So you putting the ordinance together don't mean that we get ready to, we can throw away the codes. Not at all. Plain and simple. The other part of this is you sit here today and you gave the audience eight hundred thousand dollars that need to be paid in accounts payable.
Excuse me just one second, and we're gonna give you your time back. We have to vote, I, I called the special meeting, vote on accounts payable. If you leave, we cannot vote on accounts payable.
I understand that.
Okay.
I think that your clerk know, uh, the moment I received that.
So that's why you held this meeting up that long? No, no, is that why you held it up? Because you held it up, but? Okay, so I'm just saying, you leave now, then the accounts payable can't be paid, then obviously you don't care.
People left the board.
No, that's okay, that's okay. That's okay, that's okay, that's okay.
No, it's not okay.
No, that'll go.
It's not okay.
Can't make it stay, that'll work.
It's not okay. We got accounts to pay.
Obviously, they don't care.
What a freaking job.
Obviously, they don't care. Obviously, they don't care.
I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson.
I'm sorry that, um, I was talking, was getting ready to make my comment.
She need to resign. I'm sorry, she do. She need to resign. All she do is do K got something.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna speak to the amount that she stated about the accounts payable. Um, I was at these, um, last three meetings that accounts payable was presented. And the four trustees decided that they did not wanna pay it. So they need to be held accountable while they're talking about this almost a million dollars. Somebody needs to let the gentleman know that we can't get the lights fixed, we can't get the tree trimmed, we can't get the water flowing, we can't get the bills right, mainly because they won't pay our vendors, and our vendors won't work for us anymore. And all of that has been said at these public meetings. I'm not making anything up. I'm only going by what I heard and what other people have heard at this particular meeting. Um, I am sorry that the other one, two, three, uh,
Four.
Trust, trustee Sapp wasn't present today. Trustee Williams wasn't present today. Trustee Coleman was not present today. So, but they are the ones who vote not to pay our bills. So we don't get an opportunity to have people to service us at the rate that they would regularly service us. And I wanna apologize to our VA because he was, he was, uh, demeaned today. And I want him to know that you do a fine job. And we the citizens understand what the VA does.
Alright, um, in all fairness, no. 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 We can't have an open meeting without a form. So, um, at this time, um, because we've had a trustee to walk out, there is no longer a form in the meeting.
He just walked out. She walked out at seven fifty-eight.
Yes.
Right before we were about to have a meeting.
Yes, and that's what I'm reminding. So that's why they didn't want to, and it's a shame, but I'm not gonna go any further because, um, like I said, it's not a form, this is not a meeting anymore. And they know that, and it's a shame that instead of them voting no, they just walk out. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion.
May I?
Oh, I can't talk, I, I can't talk, any action, is that? Well, that's true, we can't take a vote.
Mayor, can I add something to the record before we adjourn?
If it's going to be to the record, there is no record.
I understand.
So it just, it is what it is, everyone sitting here saw it. Only thing I can say is, um, thank you guys for coming out. And it's a shame, this is how this village has to be, it is going, and this is your tax dollars.
One thing about the mayor, we gotta go take care of it. Hey, you gotta take care. Say, I got you back.
Thank you.